Buddy, and thank you for joining us at the special meeting of the Madera City Council. If we can have roll call, please.
Mayor Andrew Madellin.
Here.
Mayor Proten, Steve Montez.
Here.
Councilmember Cici Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Jose Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Derek Robinson Senior.
President.
Councilmember Santos Garcia, absent. Councilmember Donald Holly.
Thank you very much, Claudia. And speaking to Councilmember Donald Holly, I would like to ask him to lead us in the invocation this evening, if you'll stand.
Thank you, thank you. It's always good to give reverence to our Lord and Savior. Our Lord and gracious Father, again, we come thanking you for this day. We thank you for our staff, for the city. We thank you for our council partners, men and women, Lord. Go with us and stand by, and bless our homes, heavenly Father, as we leave them day to day to do the will that you would have us to do. Blessed everything be safe as when we return, Lord. As we look on, half a year has already gone, heavenly Father. We want to give you all praises and thank you. Bless my family, as we have lost another loved one, but Lord, he's with you, and he's saved, and that's glory that we have in you. So as we continue your business for the city, heavenly Father, we ask you to give us a willing mind, and an understanding, and peace and love. In Christ Jesus' name we say, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Councilman. You join me in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, it's not agendized this evening. I was told years ago from an attorney that if it's not agendized, then we cannot discuss it. And what's not agendized this evening is public comment. But I always want to give opportunity for that. So if there is someone willing to do so, I would ask them that they come forward, and I will then read the definition of public comment. I will read the definition of public comment. The first fifteen minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes, and speakers will be asked to identify themselves and state the subject of their comment. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold the comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. I'll now ask if there's anyone wishing to speak under this definition.
Hope I meet your definition, Mr. Madellin. Ron Montoya, Madera, oh, eighteen, no, twelve ninety-two Peach Court, Madera, California, nine three six three eight, was on my grind on the way over here, you know? Avenue twelve's a pain. Where do we start? I think I always start off with that, but I just, maybe, who's gonna have the heart next year to consider banning off fireworks? Not just for my pets, not just for my neighbors' pets, not just for my dogs, not just for our cats, but for our veterans. A lot of our veterans suffer from PTSD, loud noises, the smell of smoke can trigger some emotions, some inner thoughts that we have never experienced, that we possibly will never will. You know, a lot of our neighbors are veterans, and PTSD is, does exist in our own backyard. So if you guys can be kind enough to consider that, maybe next January or so, to outlaw all fireworks, and I think, I'm hopeful the fire department gets behind this, the police department, because, you know, just to prevent types fires and so forth. But anyways, CFDs. A couple of weeks ago, I was given some information that some of the CFD funds are being lost in the general fund, and that's not okay. Being a part of this city council, and it's exhausting, and listening to people that come up and talk about paying their fair share, and hiring another analysis, and, you know, it's equally appalling to hear this, because this, these CFDs, Mr. Robinson, you're focused on homelessness. These CFDs cause homelessness, cause homelessness. It cost my neighbor his house. His 401K ran out. And now, these CFDs are unaccounted for? That's not okay. We wouldn't even be talking about this until our neighborhood, Mikey Novak, he's no longer with us, he's the one who told me about this. You guys should take more responsibility and accountability, because we're giving this city a ton of money. It's not okay. It would be, be mindful enough to say, hey, let's put an item up on the agenda and talk about the accountability, maybe reimbursing the city, or residents. Because my neighbors have literally sold their homes because of these CFDs, not to mention the water rates, not to mention the taxes, and not to mention Andy's ninety-six thousand dollar tax lien, excuse me, I had to throw that in there. But it's sad. We're better than this. We are better than this. When I charge my car over there at Save Mart, I'm always showing Andy's tax lien of ninety-six thousand dollars and having candid conversations with people, and there's a common theme. They're like, it's been like this forever. I'm from here, they're not gonna change. What will change if we all agree on term limits? That's when eyebrows will start raising. And maybe Max Rodriguez might have somebody run against him. You might be looking at him, because I'm tired of all the shenanigans. I'm just an average Joe, tired of the shenanigans, Mr. Madellin. And to hear Mr. Boyd talk about, well, I don't know where he's at, maybe he should resign too. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Under public comment, please come forward. See none, I'll close public comment and move into the first item on our agenda, which is a workshop. This is the Madera Youth Commission yearly outline for year 2019-2020. Very exciting for the city council, and I'm very pleased to have Katrina Ruiz here from the YLI. Give us that update.
Good evening, everybody, public and council members, and mayor. My name is Katrina Reese. As stated earlier, I'm the program manager for Youth Leadership Institute, which has partnered with the city of Madera to bring you the citywide Madera Youth Commission. We are gonna be talking about our yearly outline, however, because I'm not a youth commissioner, and it's not my job to present to you all, I'm gonna have our District One and Chair Youth Commissioner Juliana Vargas-Vinegas, Vinegas-Vargas, speak about our yearly outline, which will need to be amended at our first meeting, which will be held on the second Wednesday of July. And the public is definitely invited to come and hear our wonderful youth talk about their work and start doing the important work of young people in the city of Madera.
Good afternoon, mayor, city council members, and residents of Madera. My name is Juliana Vinegas. I am District One's Youth Commissioner and the chairperson for the Madera Citywide Youth Commission. Today, I am here to share the exciting work that we have done since our swearing-in on April third. We've had several meetings, including our trainings, and our trainings have included topics such as the Roberts Rules of Order, the Brown Act, and insight onto Madera city government. In our meetings, we've discussed our yearly outline and our youth commission bylaws. Now regarding our meetings, as Katrina said, they will be held on second Wednesday of every month, and special meetings as needed. Also, as youth commissioners, we will be attending city council meetings and setting up one-on-one meetings with our council members. Regarding our yearly outline, we, our goal is to advise, the youth commission's goal is to advise and recommend solutions to the city council, members and mayor of Madera on issues relating to youth. We, our objective is to conduct outreach in the community to recruit new youth commissioners from underrepresented communities for open seats. Also, to identify the concerns and needs of the youth of Madera through community outreach and engagement, and hold public forums in which children, youth, and families are encouraged to participate. We will also examine existing social, economic, educational, recreational programs, and for youth, develop and propose plans and support for youth improvement programs, and make recommendations to the city council. We will submit recommendations to the city council about public safety, job opportunities for youth, recreation activities for youth, opportunities for effective participation by youth, and governmental process, and changes in city regulations that are necessary to improve the social, economic, educational, recreational advantages, health, and well-being of youth. Once again, I'd like to thank the mayor and city council members for giving us the opportunity as youth commission to voice our opinions through this youth commission. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. You did a fantastic job, Ms. Vinegas.
We would like to open up the floor to any questions from the city council, from the mayor, or from the public regarding our yearly outline.
Actually, Juliana, if you wouldn't mind coming back. Once again, you did a fantastic job, and congratulations on being the chair. You said you're gonna meet the second Wednesday of the month. What time and where will you be meeting?
We normally meet at the Madera Youth Center, where the YLI office is. Normally, our meetings are set either at two to four, or two to five. They're not exactly set, but we do know that it's the second Wednesday of every month. We deal with the times beforehand.
Sure, council will be interested in wanting to maybe stop by and see how things are progressing. That's why I had asked.
Yes, I know that Councilmember Ms. Gallegos and Mr. Montez, I think they've attended.
And as far as recruitment, would you mind sharing just a little bit on your plans to recruit other students?
Well, our goal for now is to recruit youth commissioners for District Five and Six by November, because since the school year starts in August, we're hoping that their leadership classes, they'll seem interested, and then we can get youth commissioners for that. So our goal right now is set for November. I'm sure that there's a lot of youth in Madera that wanna voice their opinions, they just don't know about it yet, so we're trying to recruit it, recruit, get the word out there, and hopefully by November, we'll have youth commissioners for District Five and Six.
Fantastic. And you say words like opinions and problems, which we get that every day, but my favorite word you said in your presentation was solutions, that you're prepared to bring solutions to the city of Madera, and I'm very excited about that. I'm excited about the youth commission's vision and what you see for Madera, and this is exactly the purpose of asking you to work with us. So we're very, very excited to see what those recommendations and solutions are in the future. Once again, you did a fantastic job. Any other questions from my colleagues? Thank you very much.
Thank you too.
Thank you so much, Katrina. It's good to see you again. Moving on to item A two, this is our city of Madera budget and capital improvement program for fiscal year 2019-2020. Did everybody get one of these? No? It must be real special. Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, mayor, and members of the council, Arnold Rodriguez, city manager. The item before you this evening is a workshop to simply discuss next year's fiscal budget, which begins on July first. For the benefit of those in the audience in the community, the, and the budget was printed this morning, and we're in the process of putting it on our website. I would anticipate that it go live here probably by the time I'm done speaking, I would imagine. It's gonna be on our website. It is a rather voluminous document. It's slightly over five hundred pages. However, with that being said, two hundred of those pages is the capital improvement program, which was previously discussed before the city council, I wanna say, a little less than two months ago. So simply a quick recap of how we got here. The council may recall that back on April the seventeenth, this council and the community heard a presentation by Mr. Bill Statler. When I first arrived at the city, some of the concerns that I had heard from both the council, some community members and staff, is that are there different ways, or are there different approaches to how we budget here at the city of Madera? And one of the things that we did is we recruited Bill. He is known as a financial expert in terms of government financing and accounting, and we recruited him, and we had him come into the city, and he gave us a list of recommendations. We've incorporated some of his recommendations as part of this process. Next year, I would imagine that we're gonna try to improve upon that, and we'll continue to move forward in terms of continuous improvement to make sure that every year, we're trying to build off a better product. At the same time, we're giving both the council and the community more accurate information in terms of our budget process. Back on April the fourth, the city staff, it was a special workshop, it was a Thursday evening, we presented the capital improvement program, where staff received some feedback from the council. We followed up on May the twenty-ninth with the general plan and enterprise funds overview. That was also a special meeting, and then subsequent to that, we had the special revenue and internal service funds overview on June the twelfth. That leads us to today. So this evening, it's simply a workshop. Staff is not recommending that the council take any action, you know, simply to provide council with the budget document itself, and for staff to go over some key highlights. Some of these key highlights, the council's already heard. But with that being said, we know, again, it's a very large document, there's a lot of detailed information, and tonight's the very first time that council has seen the entire budget together, which makes it five hundred and ten pages, but then again, the council has seen different portions of it throughout this process. We do kinda wanna talk about, again, broad overview. We're gonna be talking about some of the assumptions and projections in terms of how we got to where we're at for next year, and then also, if all goes well tonight, and at council direction, we would like to bring this document back before council for consideration next week. With that being said, if it takes, you know, say hypothetically, the second week of July, then that's okay as well. We can most definitely do that. So a couple of things that you're gonna find in your document, it's, there's a section, I believe it starts on page five or six, it's a city manager's budget, in terms of some potential opportunities. Our go-through this process, again, is to continue excellent community service, and to make sure that our community's safe. We, again, we're taking a somewhat of a fiscal, of a somewhat conservative fiscal approach. We understand that the economy around us is evolving. It's evolving more, there's a lot to talk about, some potential recession, so we try to take that into account. The same time, again, we're attempting to balance next year's operating budget. Coupled with that, we're trying to make sure that we're the employer of choice. One of the things that we've heard from our workers or employees here at the city is that, that, that if we don't foster a good culture, healthy organization, then there's always a chance that we're gonna lose good employees. We most definitely don't want to do that. We wanna make sure that we're retaining good employees, we're providing enough opportunities here at the city, and that we are the employer of choice in the region. And at the same time, we're attempting, with all of that said, we're attempting to improve our service delivery. Hopefully, in January or early February, Fire Station Fifty-Eight's gonna go online, we're gonna deploy a new ladder truck, and at the same time, we're taking a hard look at all of our planning processes, planning and building and engineering processes, to make sure that we're meeting our customers' expectations. So a couple of challenges. Every report that we've seen, they're projecting stagnant growth for the upcoming fiscal year. We know that we're experiencing increases in our expenses. There's a lot of deferred maintenance at the city going back decades. This budget does not address all of those. There's a couple of line items in your budget that addresses them, but again, they're very, very small relative to the overall need. However, with that being said, there's some opportunities that I think we can identify moving forward to reduce costs, to potentially increase revenue, to update our service delivery plans, and at the same time, for new partnerships with a lot of our local, say, service organizations, social organizations, where we feel that there's value added there for the community. So a couple of big things about the document, one of the things you've probably noticed that the document does it look, it feels, and it reads a little bit different than past years. Now, I understand that the council hasn't had a lot of time to, you know, really dive into it, you've only had it for twenty minutes. But a couple of things that we've tried doing, again, the formats, it's a brand-new format, and we've attempted to incorporate some more legible tables, some charts, and some graphs, make it a little bit more digestible, not only for the council and staff, but for the community at the end of the day. One of the big challenges for us throughout this process, about a month ago, we changed the process, and now we were, and we're utilizing some software that the city purchased, that we were utilizing it before, but we weren't utilizing it to its full, you know, to its full potential. And so one of the things that that posed some challenges on the front end, the best analogy that I can come up with is we're building the plane as we're flying it. So we have to do the budget, but at the same time, the old way of doing it created a lot more challenges, and we said, you know what? At some point, we have to do it. And as the saying go, first, so the first person through the fence gets bloody? Well, that's what happened. So you did have a handful of people here at the office that spent a considerable amount of time, you know, really working on this budget. You're gonna hear from one of those people shortly here, so we have Susan, we have Eric Battles, and Joseph. On top of that, we had a lot of people pinch-hitting. We had Mary Church, who not only did public works budget, she also did the parks budget, so there was a lot of people. And I don't wanna start naming everyone, because I'm gonna probably forget someone, and I don't wanna do that either. The other thing that we tried doing, we tried incorporating consistent language throughout the document, so the message is not lost. We tried not to really utilize a lot of technical terms, quite frankly, 'cause I don't understand them, and so I tried simplifying it. We also added a section called Key Budget Assumptions and Changes. This budget, the budget process, you're assuming what your expenditures are, and you're assuming what your projected revenues are. So with all that being said, we're attempting to do that. And at the same time, moving forward, this document, we're gonna treat it as a living document. It can't be a static document. Whenever there's changes, then we're gonna come before the council. Next year, I can assure you, this document's probably gonna read and look a little bit different than what's before you this evening. Throughout the past forty-eight hours, the past twelve hours, we've identified some things, we said, you know what, we can do that better next year. And so we're gonna start a list, and as the year progresses, we're gonna be sure that we're incorporating those processes looking forward. A couple of key changes to accounting practices. I know that this is probably the fourth or fifth time I've said this, but we're gonna be, we're gonna begin to separate Measure K funds from the general fund, so that, the new accounts are gonna be established on July first. We are also proposing a set-aside fund for an engine replacement, truck replacement. This year, we're gonna be proposing two hundred thousand dollars. The reason it's two hundred thousand dollars is we should be changing one of our engines or one of our ladder trucks every roughly five years. That allows every truck to be changed every fifteen years. A new engine currently is roughly nine hundred thousand dollars. A ladder truck is closer to one point four million dollars. By the time we buy them, I'm gonna presume that that cost is gonna go up a little bit, so that, every five years, gives us about a million dollars to replace those. And at the same time, the police and the fire department, we're proposing that those two departments begin to build a thirty percent general fund reserve or measure K reserve moving forward. That would be in line with the general fund reserve policy that the current city has in place. With that being said, we didn't wanna do it all in one year. So this year, we're proposing, or next fiscal year, I should add, we're proposing that each department contribute a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Those hundred and thirty thousand dollars are gonna stay in those funds, they're not gonna be shifted over to the general fund. They're gonna stay in that account, in case there is a recession, there's a small, a very small cushion there, to try to make sure that we can move forward collectively. The other thing that we're proposing is to separate capital from operating cost. We took a stab at it in this budget, there are a couple of places that you're gonna find them where they're still combined. However, we've gotten the vast majority of them, it simply came down to time. Moving forward, I can assure you that we're gonna continue to work on that, so moving forward, in next year's budget, we'll clean it up even more, and the year after that, even more. A couple of assumptions, and this is outlined in the budget. Our sales tax revenue is projected to decrease in comparison to the year-end that we're about to finish here in two days, or four days. With that being said, that's still an increase versus where we were projected to end. However, it is a decrease. That decrease, it's tabulated by Mini Services, who's our tax consultant. With that being said, they're projecting roughly eight point four four million dollars for next fiscal year. Our transit occupancy tax, that's the hotel tax, we're projected to remain the same at about eight hundred thousand dollars. With that being said, we do have a new hotel directly across the street that was offline last year. With that even, we didn't wanna simply add numbers, 'cause if the economy slips a little bit, you're almost assuming that, that, that some of the hotel stays are probably gonna decrease slightly. Our property tax, which is also commonly referred to as a VLF, which was established in two thousand and four by the governor, we're projected to generate roughly six million dollars. Our tax sharing agreement for property taxes, we're projecting an increase of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and that came from the county, and so we're projecting to receive roughly three point seven million dollars. The tax sharing agreement is stipulated, as part of a tax sharing agreement, that tax sharing agreement sunsets on June the sixth of two thousand and twenty, come with the county, the existing agreement, it's a three-year agreement. In terms of golf course revenue, we are projecting revenues status quo. That's kind of a challenge, because we're also, we'll be in negotiations, because our current operator, the contract for that expires October of this year. Business license revenue, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Cable franchise tax, three hundred and twenty-five. Electric franchise tax, three hundred and sixty thousand. With that being said, we also have twenty-eight current vacant positions. Seventeen of those are budgeted at a hundred percent. That's assuming that they're gonna be starting on, you know, truly July first. Some of those, since we wrote this, some of those, I think maybe one or two's already filled. And with that being said, the remaining eleven percent of those positions, the remaining eleven positions are allocated in terms of budget between twenty-five and ninety percent of the year. So at this point, we're gonna be holding off on filling some of those positions, they're still in the budget, but we're not gonna fill them on July first. So for example, if there's a position that we said, well, you know what, if we started to recruiting July first, what's the most reasonable time that that person can begin? It's probably September, roughly, maybe the end of August. So instead of doing it at a hundred percent, what we did, we said, well, maybe it's eighty percent, maybe it's seventy-seven percent, and those are some of the things that we attempted to do, to try to bring forward a balanced budget. A couple of other big assumptions. The budget before you does not include, or does not assume a cost of living increase or COLA, or enhanced benefits. It does not include the sale of the property after you have an industrial park, we're currently in escrow, we're supposed to be closing escrow, there's a groundbreaking ceremony on Monday. The reason that those funds are not, they're not included in this budget, because we haven't received them, and we don't really know when we're gonna close escrow. It's, and then also, we did allocate funds as part of this budget for the League of California Cities training. I should add that once the property sale goes through for Freedom Industrial Park, we're gonna be coming back to council to make sure that we can appropriate those funds properly. A couple of other things that we've added, there's approximately twenty thousand dollars in this budget to fund a consultant for parks' capital projects. There's about twenty thousand dollars, or not about, there is twenty thousand dollars to fund swimming pool repairs over at Swimming Pool Park. That's a capital project, not a general fund item. There are roughly seventy thousand dollars for parks and senior services as a result of the reduction in CDBG funding this year, and that's to provide meals for seniors in our community. There's forty thousand dollars allocated to, for new vehicle lift for fleet. There's roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for new computer server equipment, and that's not here at City Hall, but rather, that's for the city as a whole. There's seventy-five thousand dollars in the water fund, and that's split thirty-seven and a half thousand for both sewer and solid waste, for new rate studies. Twenty-five thousand dollars to replace the SCADA computers at the wastewater treatment plant. There's thirty-five thousand dollars for a new camera system at the airport, and there's forty thousand dollars to drill a new well at the airport as well, or monitoring well, I should add. A few, handful of other things that are worth highlighting. We're assuming that Fire Station Fifty-Eight's gonna be complete come January, February. So there are seven new firefighter positions that are included in this budget, as well as the equipment that they're gonna need, and the operations of the fire station. One other thing that's not included in here is the loan that we're about to receive for the construction of that fire station. I believe we received it, we're supposed to receive it today, so it's gonna be here today or tomorrow. So the challenge is, again, we're building the plane as we're flying it, we received the funds today, so it wouldn't go in next year's budget, but at some point, we're gonna have to come back and acknowledge that as part of the existing fiscal budget. And then also, we've included some funds to repave the parking lot at Fire Station Fifty- Seven, kind of which is in great need of repair. That's proposed to be measure K funding. And then again, I had alluded to this a short time ago, that we're gonna begin to fund apparatus replacement for fire engines and fire trucks. And the contribution, I talked about that as well. The last bullet point on the overhead, there is something that at some point, we'll have to come back and we'll have to have a discussion with city council. It's the need for new battalion chief. We're gonna have to really increase our fire inspections, there's some new, there's some new assembly bills that have gone through the state legislation, that are gonna require that we change how we operate, and we'll be coming back before the city council. I'm not gonna say shortly, but it's gonna be sooner rather than later to talk to the council about that as well. And again, that's in response to new state regulations. So this evening, we are proposing a balanced budget. So the question is, what's a balanced budget? Projected operational revenues will pay for projected operational expenses. So next year, what we're talking about is, the revenue that we generate next year, we're proposing to pay for our projected expenses for next year. And again, the operational costs are the day-to-day expenses that the city incurs. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Susan, and Susan's gonna walk you through some of the line items. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Thank you, Arnoldo. Susan O'Hara, interim director of financial services. Good evening, mayor and city council members, and members of the community. I wanna, I wanna back up just a little bit, if I can figure out how. I wanna talk about, oh, too far. See if I can find where I wanted to. Okay, well, I don't know what slide it was on. Anyway, I wanna talk a little bit about general fund, and what that means, 'cause I've listened over the course of the last couple of council meetings, and I feel there's some confusion there, so I'd like to kinda clear that up before we start. On our financial statements at the end of the year, there is one column that says general fund, and it has net totals of actually five different funds in our operating, in our accounting system. So... So, in the general fund, there is the, what everybody considers the general fund fund, we call it Fund Ten Twenty, um, where all of the City Hall kind of activities take place and the revenues come in and, and all that. But also included under that general fund heading is the grants fund, um, Measure K fund, the insurance reserve fund, and then there's a tire grant fund that actually I need to move out of the general fund, it should be in a special revenue fund, but, um, so I just want to clarify that, um, wh- when we're talking about, uh, reserves, and we say general fund reserves, i- it's inclusive of those five funds, and all that money is accounted for separately. And there was a, a question a couple of meetings ago about the insurance reserve, and I think, um, Mr. Rodriguez, you asked, why wasn't that in its own fund? And I just want to clarify that it is. Um, uh, each of those funds have their own fund balances, um, but they're grouped together, um, just from accounting practices on the financial statements as general fund. So, keep the, keeping that in mind, as we, as we go through the budget, um, the general fund heading includes those five funds, but the first one, which we call general fund, which is really confusing, um, is kind of the one that everybody's interested in, because that's, that's the one that, um, where all the activity takes place. So hopefully I cleared that up a little bit. Um, so, general fund, operating budget, as Arnaldo alluded to, we're, we're trying really hard to make it very clear what are operating expenses and what are one-time capital outlay purchases that typically are intended to be funded from fund balance. Um, fund balance, I kind of look at as the savings account, so we're saving up for things, and then when we purchase those things, they come out of the savings account, not, not the day-to-day operations. So, throughout this budget, we've got overall numbers, and we've got operating numbers, so as you read through your budget document, you know, make sure that you're, you're looking at the titles, and if it says operating, then capital outlay has not been included in those numbers. Try to clarify that. So the, the general fund, Fund Ten Twenty, just that one fund under that heading, um, we project to have operating revenues of thirty-one point six million with operating expenditures of thirty-one point four. We also have a little bit of capital outlay. Um, we have a remaining balance, I believe, on our, um, software system drawdown of about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And then there's the twenty thousand dollar parks, um, pool, swimming pool project. Um, there are some, there are some capital outlay projects in uh, the streets department, but there's also funds that cover that outlay that don't come out of the general fund, so they kind of zero each other out, so I didn't project those here. Um, so that leaves us with a basically fifty-one thousand dollars in savings that would increase our fund balance if that's really how the year comes out. Any questions on that so far? Okay. So, overall here, we've got revenues, expenditures, the remaining balance, and the capital outlay. So, these are your, your general fund, funds. Um, the, the one thing that we've, um, done in the past is, is Measure K, police and fire, we're in one fund. Um, the, the intention here, at the end of the year, I haven't done it yet, but I have presented it as such, at the end of the year, we will split that fund. We will calculate what portion of the fund balance belongs to fire, what portion belongs to police. We will make those adjustments, uh, in the accounting system. It's, it's just a lot of, um, journal entries that will have to be made as part of the year-end process. Um, so on July first, we will have two separate funds, and they will be Ten Twenty-Five and Ten Twenty-Six. So I have split, split out their revenues and expenditures here for, um, displays, as you can see, um, police, they, they had a savings of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, but they also have some fund balance that they would like to spend on, um, an upgraded, an upgrade to their ra- radio system, correct? And that's about five hundred and ninety-seven dol- thousand dollars, I think it was, so with their savings from the budget, plus what they have in fund balance, they have more than enough money to fund, fund that capital outlay purchase. Um, fire, uh, they're going to have a remaining about one point three million dollars, they have the hundred thousand dollars in the parking lot that, repaving that Arnaldo alluded to. Um, there also, the rest of that's going to go towards, obviously, the new fire station, and, and we did receive the funding for that today. Um, so we will, I believe, next week be bringing that, um, resolution back to accept that, and then we will adj- amend this year's budget since we received it in the current year. Um, and then the, um, insurance reserve fund, which, uh, currently has, um, plenty of fund balance. Um, we're actually spending a little bit of that fund balance to fund this next year's operations. The enterprise funds, which are all of the departments in the city that are operated basically by user fees and, um, other types of service fees, um, which is why they're called enterprise funds. Um, a- a- again, we, I gave you revenues and expenditures, and then the capital outlays, so you can see what the, the operating amount is. But then, like in water, we are, we're going to have, you know, four million dollars, but we're going to spend six million in capital, so we're going to dip into the water fund balance, which is what it's there for. We, our user fees are based on maintaining the infrastructure, so we save up in that fund balance, and then when we do projects, um, that's, that's what that gets spent on. So as you can see, there's about six million dollars in, in surplus, but eight million dollars in capital outlays. So fund balance overall in the enterprise funds will go down, but that's, that's not necessarily a bad thing, because that's why it's there, um, to, to fund these infrastructure projects. Um, the internal service funds, um, for the most part, they zero out, they charge out what they expect to spend, with the, um, exception of the fleet, because on any given year, they may be purchasing vehicles that, again, they've saved up for, so they have fund balance to now purchase those vehicles for those departments that are, are in, that have vehicles that are expiring their useful life. And then revenue, uh, special revenue funds, um, these are all mainly used for, um, capital outlay projects that run over several years. So, to do revenues and expenditures and balances doesn't really make a whole lot of sense, because they're all kind of in their own funds. Um, but this kind of, just an overall picture to give you an idea of how much in revenues we get in from special, um, revenue funds, and how much of that currently this year will be spent on, um, projects that are in, in, in the works. And that's part of your CIP, um, budget. We, we added this, um, feature this year, this is just our overall outstanding debt that, um, over the years, we've, uh, acquired for the, the purposes listed. Um, and, and then how many years are left on it? So, you'll see later when, in the, the budget, there's a five-year forecast, and so, some of the numbers, um, like our, our maintenance and operations, which is where we've kind of put the debt service for some of these, goes down. Um, and so the question will be, well, why is it going down? Why isn't it going up? Because costs go up. But some of these, um, debt services retire here in the next two, three, four, or five years. So that's, we, we gain a little bit from not having to make those payments, and the one big one I'd like to mention is we just last week paid off the youth center. That was a two hundred thousand dollar a year payment, we made that last payment, actually, today, I just got the, um, recorded deed in the mail, so, um, we successfully completed that obligation, and that freed up a two hundred thousand dollar payment. So as you can see, over the course of the next several years, there are several loans that, that should be completed, and that will eliminate that payment. Um, of course, the, the elephant in the room is the PERS costs. Um, so I put together a slide just to kind of demonstrate where we're, where this is going. Um, PERS has, actually, there's, there's really three costs in, involved in, in the PERS calculation. There's the employer calcu- uh, percentage that, um, is calculated, we get a new percentage every year, we have four different, uh, plans now. It used to be two, and then it was three, and now it's four. Um, it used to be just miscellaneous and safety, and then, um, I want to say in like November of two thousand and twelve, we redid our, uh, PERS plan. So anybody that was hired after that point that was a, a PERS member at any other agency, coming into this agency, would be brought in at, on that plan. And then in January of twenty thirteen, I believe it was, PEPRA, the, the new retirement plan, um, came into being, and, um, they have different rates for that plan, so these are all different plans that have to be calculated. But, as you can see, the employer contribution rate, um, just continues to, to go up. So I've given you the percentages there of, of what, um, we can expect, that's as far out as they've forecasted it. Their, their forecast after that just says two, twenty-three point three percent across the, across the screen, so, um, that's probably not going to stay static for the next ten years, but right now, that's as far out as they're willing to go. So, th- this is the part of the, uh, PERS contribution that the employer is required to pay, there's an employee portion also, which, which remains at eight percent. Um, and then there's this unfunded annual liability thing that, um, came about, um, four ye- four years ago now, three, three, four years ago. Um, a- and basically, PERS, I think, figured out that their calculations as far as how they were going to fund this plan were maybe a little, um, lofty. So they, they lowered their expectation of return and created all of this unfunded liability. And basically, what this represents is all of the employees that have ever been PERS members or are going to be PERS members, um, this is how much we need to make up for that overestimation of what PERS thought they were going to make. So yes, it came as quite a shock to, to most, um, PERS agencies that all of a sudden, you know, what, what, what's a million dollars? Um, and it just keeps going up, as you can see. Now, the good news is, I didn't want to put too many, too many screens on here, because then, then it gets to the point where you can't read it, but I believe it's in twenty four, twenty-five, that it takes a big nosedive. So if we, if we can get through this five-year hump, this, this will get less expensive bec- in theory. Um, you know, the thought is, if we get this all caught up, then once we get caught up, that the, the unfunded liability should go way down. That, that's the projection. Um, so as you can see, um, eighteen, nineteen, it was two point nine, nineteen, twenty, three point four. Um, I think I have percentages overall of.
Susan, Councilman, Councilman Rodriguez has a question.
Yes.
Yeah. On those comments, we're, we're all caught up, Susan. So you're anticipating that the rates of return are what they have for the members of the, um, uh, CalPERS, so in any given year, that the rate of return is not there, then that could change, correct?
Absolutely, or if it's better.
Yes, yes, but just so I can cl- clarify this, is that you're saying that, um, once we're over this hump, then we take a nosedive, assuming that the rate of return is there, correct?
In theory.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. They're projecting right now that in, um, twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, it, it goes down like twenty-three percent. But we have to get there.
The only reason why I say that is because they had those same assumptions years back, and obviously, this is where we're at now, so. Just to be cognizant that, uh.
Right, so we're, we're cautious. Um, let's see. So the, the eighteen, nineteen, and nineteen, twenty equated to about an eighteen percent increase, and then we do, um, twelve percent for the next couple of years, and then nine, and then five, and then a negative eight. So they're projecting that this increase is going to decrease. Um, but like you said, it's all going to depend on, on, you know, what their actuals are and what their projection is when they reevaluate where they are next year. So, all we can do is keep an eye on it and plan for it. Um, one of the things we are going to do this year, I believe it, I don't know the exact number, but it's going to save us about eighty thousand dollars, is that about right? A little less, seventy-five thousand dollars, is we're going to, we're going to pay this upfront. So what PERS does is they, they send you a bill, and they say, okay, well, if you pay this upfront, you can pay this much or pay this much once a month. So the past couple of years, we've paid it once a month, um, but this year, we're going to just pay it upfront and save, um, a bunch of interest on that, so that is our plan. Items not addressed, so unassigned fund balance. Um, there, there is on our financial statements, under general fund, four point six million dollars of fund balance. Financial statements have several different, um, distinctions of, of designating a fund balance. There are some legal restrictions, which are called restricted. Um, I don't have them all memorized, but then there's various forms of if the city council says set it aside, it, it's called one type of, of restriction, and if we're just, management's just kind of planning on, maybe we're going to save that for, I don't know, a new swimming pool, then we're going to designate that. And so there's, there's some terminology that, that distinguishes between legal requirements and the wish list. Um, unfortunately, the, this four point six million dollars shouldn't, should not be unassigned. Um, I believe, and again, don't quote me on my exact numbers, but I believe one point one million of it is actually reserved for the insurance reserve fund. It is in that fund. It just needs to be assigned. Um, I think one point two was, uh, Measure K, and then, um, what was the other? Uh, yeah, th- and some of it was fire, so yeah, there, there was not, um, oh, one point two, that's right, there was one point two in the general fund. But as you'll recall, at the end of last year, you, um, approved using fund balance to buy, um, the new police building. So, that was the case where we had savings, and we chose to spend the savings. And unfortunately, that building didn't actually happen until July third. So then it became a, a this year, um, item on the, on the, um, budget, because I just rolled that, um, appropriation over. Um, it was just a timing issue with the title company. Um, so that one point two million dollars that was in the general fund was spent. So, that's, that's where that confusion came from, so as, as we close out this year, um, and we determine what additions are, I, I mean, I'm confident we're going to have some additions to fund balance at the end of the year. Um, we will take a very close look at what is there, and we will make those assignments as part of our, our year-end process also. So that, next time on the, on the financial statements, under fund balance, it will be restricted, designated, assigned. There's one more, I can never remember what the fourth one is, but it, it will, it will very clearly show you, um, what's restricted by, by law, what's restricted by city council, what's restricted because the city manager wants a, I don't know, something. Uh, so, so that, we will, we will clear that up.
That, that clarification you're talking about totals up to about four point four?
And then we have eleven point six million reserved.
But for that particular, that was originally unassigned.
On the four point six seven million dollars. We're currently doing some assessment, and the number that comes, I believe it's ninety-seven thousand dollars.
That, that's still in there?
In the un- correct. Yeah, it's, it's, it's.
Four point five-ish, or so a little more than.
Correct, it's a slightly more than ninety-seven thousand dollars, but it doesn't reach ninety-eight thousand.
Yeah, I know there's a little bit left over, I, I've looked at way too many, that was like three weeks ago, I looked at that, so I can't give you the exact, but, um, there is, there's a little bit left over in there, and then, um, we, we will have some savings, some salary savings at the end of this year, I, I'm not going to project what those are, because I've, um, had three weeks of doing a budget, so I haven't really had time to look at that yet, but, um, I, I do know we had quite a, quite a bit of salary savings, and so.
Councilman Rodriguez has a question.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Susan, along those lines with unassigned, uh, uh, fund, earlier I, I heard a city manager talk about a loan that we're receiving for the fire, uh, station, and then you mentioned that again, that we were approved. We had some type of money coming in.
Yes, we did a bond sale on, um.
So how do you allocate those funds in our general fund? What would they be designated as? Unrestricted funds, are they part of the same fund, uh, here, unassigned?
No, actually, I believe, and, and bond financing is, um, I'm a little new to, but I believe it goes in as cash with fiscal agent, and we draw it down as we spend it, is that, I, I believe that's how it goes. So it'll show up on the financial statements as cash with this fiscal agent. Um, it does, it does show up in fund balance, but it will be designated for the, the fire.
When we see the modified budget, then you will show increase in revenues.
And actually, actually, that for, I, I believe we're going to, we received four point five million dollars. So that will go in, we'll come back to you next week as, um, a budget amendment for this current year, and then it will roll over with the project going forward till we. we, we complete the fire station.
Just to clarify, bond funds come in as revenue for us, and we show it as cash entry?
Yes.
Okay.
And so just one more component of clarification, if I may, Mayor. The, the existing money in the unassigned fund balance and the loan that we receive, we will need all of it to pay for the new fire station that's under construction. So there's not going to be any excess revenue in those accounts. So probably in the next six to seven months, that's, that's quickly going to go from six-plus million dollars to more than likely zero.
Yeah. It won't be there long.
No, but we'll have a big, beautiful building to show for it.
Yes, yes. And seven, seven firefighters with new gear, and yeah.
Absolutely.
So, so I know at one of the workshops, the council kind of came up with a list of things that they would like to, to see happen in the city. I think sidewalk repair was at the CIP workshop, and the rotary park curb replacement. And then there's also the city hall annex improvements to relocate over to the old RDA building, the engineering, planning, and building departments. So as we wrap up this year and determine how much we may have left over from this year, plus what's currently unassigned...
[inaudible]
There you go. Then we, we will be able to entertain those, those projects, and bring, we'll bring that back to you, and then you can decide what projects we want to add, add in. And as Arnoldo points out, it, it would be really premature of me to stand up here and, and give you a number. I don't know what that number is, but we will, by the end of August, hopefully, have a good idea. But it's not cast in stone until the financial statements are issued. So we will probably wait until that point before we bring it back to council for consideration. That's the end of our slideshow.
And just a couple of points that I'd like to elaborate on. A couple of the key things, kind of Susan had highlighted there. So we are projecting a significant increase in our person-funded liability, roughly half a million dollars. The, the positive news is that we've paid off the well standard, so that was roughly $194,000, which came off the books. So this current fiscal year was our last payment, so we no longer have to pay that. That's, that's great news. The unfortunate news again is our unfunded PERS liability is going up. And then, as Susan said, we're going to be prepaying our, our PERS unfunded liability. We did a calculation to see what was more economical to the city, leaving the money and us receiving interest on it, or prepaying it. The difference was roughly, as Susan said, 70 to 74,000. Obviously, it can't be precise because we don't really know what the economy is going to do. But based on historical figures, we calculated that we can save the city money by prepaying it. And we took into account... Yeah, thank you. So, you know, simply in closing, it's a, it's a very large document. Again, kind of this evening, staff is not proposing that council take any action. However, we're looking for feedback. With that said, what hasn't been lost on staff are some of the items that the council had discussed during the capital improvement program. Specifically, the, some repairs at Rotary Park, and some of the sidewalk repairs that we all collectively want to do. Once, once we close out this fiscal year, and we, and we have a more concrete number, we'll come back to council, and we'll talk to council about where we're getting in this year. We, we are taking, so starting next year, we, we're simply trying to act, or not act, but because it's true, we, we assume that we're going to generate X dollars in, in projections, which we talked about. And that's, that's what we're proposing to spend. And at, at this point, I simply just want to say, can thank you very much to all of our staff. It, it was truly a team effort. What some people don't know is last week, there, there's a couple of employees that didn't go home for, over two days straight. And so if you saw them on Thursday morning, and you saw them on Friday night, they were wearing the same clothes. So, so I think we're extremely fortunate. We put together a, a, a very robust document. I'm not going to say in a month we put it together. Process started, we're biting the bullet and doing it. And, and we truly rolled up our sleeves, and it was a team effort. So for that, thank you very much to staff. There was a lot of people, a lot of people pinch hitting, a lot of people in a lot of slightly different positions what they've historically been accustomed to. But everyone came together. There's been a lot of meetings. I'm confident staff is, or I'm, I'm pretty certain staff is tired of meeting with Susan and I, and Eric. And so this will give them a break. But with that, we're prepared to answer any questions, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rodriguez, and Susan, and the team. Councilman Holly has a question.
Yes. Mr. Manager, I've been reading here, I guess it's somebody's emailing everybody throughout our email. PERS is, that's what's costing us a lot of money. Is there, I, I read some, that somebody sent to, you know, emails that we need to get out of PERS. Is that possible to get out of, or is it something that we have to be in, or what?
We do not have to be in PERS. The, the answer is yes, we can get out of PERS. However, it's at an extremely high cost. Tens of millions of dollars. That's, PERS, it's, it's not a statewide, or, it's not a statewide agency, but it's a retirement system that the vast majority of California cities and local governments are part of. Not all cities are part of it. For example, the city of Fresno is not part of PERS. With that being said, once you try to get out of it, you have to prepay your unfunded liability, which again, it's in the tens of millions of dollars. Unfortunately, I don't have that number at my fingertip. However, I can assure you that, that the agencies that try to get out of it, so, so the answer is yes, we can get out of it. The question becomes is, is the city willing to prepay it? And I can assure you that we do not have the funds. And we would not have the funds for many years to do something like that.
It would not make sense. It's way too expensive. We've, we've, the question has been asked before. And I think the last number I heard was in excess of $40 million. Give or take a million or two. Right, Susan?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's just not feasible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not that it's something that you're thinking of doing at all, but you said number of tens of millions, I mean, and then I hear 40 million. I mean, is there a number somewhat of what that would cost?
Kind of, so there's a number. Can, we can reach out to CalPERS, and so they can give us a number. It's probably going to take some work on our end. I'm, I'm going to look at Susan. I should probably let Susan answer this.
I would hate for that, if that's not the direction of this council. I just wanted to see if there's a number out there.
The number exists in our actual reports. I just need to add the different reports together. I can have it too in the morning.
Would that be something that goes out of your way there? I mean, would council feel okay?
Not terribly. I could probably do it in five minutes or less.
This way, we can put an end to that myth, whether it's 50 million, 5 million, 10 million. It's at least good to know what we're looking at, what we're facing.
I agree.
I mean, it's taken us $4 million in the last, based on the numbers that I'm seeing now, that there's a potential $5 million. So, I mean, just out of curiosity, I think it'd be good for the council to know.
I, I too want to thank you and, and the team, Mr. Rodriguez. I, I've mentioned this before. You've been with us for six months, and this was quite a task. And I think it was very prudent to just kind of hit the reset button. And if we're going to do this, let's take our time and, and do it right the first time, then kind of be status quo and, and use that phrase, this is the way we've always done it. And so I certainly don't mind, as much as I would like to have the budget before June 30, I think in this particular case, that we come together as a team, and we face those challenges, and we crawl before we walk, and we, and we do it right. If that's going to take us a little bit extra time, then so be it. Because it's not only about getting us numbers, what you have been presenting to us is how we're going to address it and, and be not only more accurate, but basically be a better city as we move forward. It's not just about the numbers. And so I can appreciate that on how we can look at things that have been working for us, and how we continue to move forward and succeed, and those things that have not been working for us, and what we can do to change that narrative and change it for the better. So as much as I think we would all like to see that budget zipped up by now, I, I, I can say it, it seems like we're black. It may be shades of black. We're not quite sure yet. But we, it was not that long ago that we were talking deficits, and we had kind of a wide range of where we could and could not go. So I am certainly in support of that reset button. And let's just kind of start fresh and start over, and present something that you and the team can stand behind 110%. If that, if that's not this evening, then so be it.
Thank you. So overall, so the budget that we're proposing has a surplus operating budget of $51,000. So is that a whole lot of money? Well, it's all relative, right? It sounds like a lot of money, but when you're talking such a large budget, it's, it's not a tremendous amount.
It, it's not a tremendous amount, I agree. But compared to some cities, and compared to the challenges that we face as being a city in California, it's not a bad position.
Correct. I agree.
We, we face, like other cities, we, we face a number of challenges in the state of California. So it, and it, it seems to be a, a true number. And the budget seems to give us, as policymakers and seven decision-makers, a, a, a better handle on, on how we move forward. Any other comments or questions from council? Although this is a workshop, I'll ask if there's anybody in the audience that has any comments or questions would like to come forward regarding this particular workshop?
Matt, did I see you move?
No. Seeing none, I'll move on to item B1. This is under hearings, petitions, bids, and resos. This is a consideration of a resolution of the city council of the city of Madera, continuing expenditures and revenues in accordance with the 2018-2019 city budget in lieu of timely 2019-2020 budget adoption. Basically, we need to move forward with...
The resolution before you is to allow us to legally continue to operate for the first three days of July without an approved budget. We're not breaking any laws. There is really not a law about having to have a, a budget, but we do have to file a, a list of expenditures with the state. We actually have till August 30th to do that. But our goal, believe me, our goal was to bring you a budget tonight. We tried really hard. And I too would like to thank Arnaldo, put a lot of effort into this, Joe Correia, and Eric Battles, and Mary. There was a lot of people. Bonnie came and helped us proofread, and Becky came and checked to make sure we put the tabs in the right place. And Ellen from engineering came over last Wednesday and said, can I go get you some lunch? Just out of nowhere. I mean, just, the police brought us breakfast burritos when we'd been up all night. So it, this was truly a, a citywide effort to get this here tonight. And about 8:00 Friday night, I found some errors, and I was just like, hmm, we got it, we got to step back. And, because I, I wanted to make sure that everything added up. And so we did that, and it does. And we just couldn't get it done in time to do the legal posting that we needed to do. So we will bring it back next Wednesday. I, I encourage you to, to read through it. Joe and Arnaldo and Eric did some awesome graphic kind of stuff, put together some fun facts about Madera, the things I didn't even know. It's actually kind of an entertaining reading. And I'll, and I'll tell you, I think we're all really proud of the, the document that we've, we've put before you tonight. So with that being said, if anybody, over the course of the next few days, sees something they question or need an explanation of, I please encourage you to, to call, and we'll walk through it, and try to get your questions answered so that next Wednesday, everybody feels comfortable with, with what's before you.
Fantastic, thank you.
But on to this. So because of all that, we need a resolution that allows us to continue operating and, and meeting our obligations until we do have an approved budget. So that is the purpose of this resolution, and it's staff's recommendation that, that you approve it.
Thank you, Susan. Any questions regarding this resolution? Anyone from the audience wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt the resolution that's been presented to us.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve item B1 as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
We have to do a roll call vote.
Yeah, roll call vote.
I was going to say, we just did that last week, but we're not official yet, are we?
We are not.
You're going to just kill me.
Okay.
I'm sorry, roll call vote, please, for item B1.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Montez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia, absent. Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Medellin?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much for that. I'll move on to council reports. Starting at my far right with Councilman Robinson.
Nothing to report.
To woman Gallegos.
Really fast, thank you. A shout out to Public Works for fixing that water leak on Yosemite. Got a lot of calls and texts, so I'm glad that was fixed. Another shout out to our, our PD for working so diligently to find the gentleman who hit and ran the young lady when I was doing the ride along that Friday night. And so with all the work that has went out to solve that, and we had some other things happen this last weekend, I'd like to thank you on behalf of probably, I'm, I'm going to speak for all of us, that we appreciate all that you do out there. It's not easy. And that's it.
Thank you for that. Thank you very much. Councilman Holly?
Yes. Really, I have nothing to report. Just want to say thank you to everyone who prayed for me last week. Not out of danger yet, but so far, things are looking forward for my family. Just lost another family member. Matter of fact, two of them. But things are looking up, and I just hope you just continue your prayer. It's not that I don't like being here, it's just that, you know, you know, family is always first to me. The city will run without me, but I'll do my diligence to be at all meetings that I can. Just letting everyone know, if you don't see me, it's because I have obligations to my family and my wife. So I just want everybody to know that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protan Montez?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Nor do I have anything to report. So thank you all very, very much for being here this evening. We now have an announcement regarding closed session.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Staff this evening is recommending that the council refer items D1, D2, D3, D4, and D5 back to, to staff. So staff is recommending that we not have a closed session this evening.
Amen.
Is that, is that something you'd like in the form of a motion, Mr. Rodriguez? Or is that something you're just recommending, and you want our approval?
I would like the council's approval, kind of would be appropriate.
Does any of my colleagues have an issue with that? Are we okay to move?
Tabling?
We're tabling the closed session, basically. All...
You want to make a motion? We table that, or?
I don't think we need a motion. I think if we're on agreement, we'll be okay with that.
Yes, but you could do, uh, you can just a motion, a little formal.
You started it.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we table item D1, D2, D3, D4, and D5 at a later date when staff brings that back to the council.
My second.
No, do you want a roll call vote on that, too?
No need. That's not a resolution. It's not an ordinance. We're good.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. 710, ma'am. Not too bad. Special meeting.